Good evening. It's wonderful to see all of you here. We appreciate you coming out on this bad weather evening to join us for our first Town Hall meeting. I'm Molly Howard. I'm Chairman of the Church Council, and we are going to be presenting a... we'll have some presentations by clergy as well as laypeople, and then you'll have an opportunity to ask questions. It is going to be a question-and-answer format after they finish their presentations. So Mike Miller is going to bring you a microphone, and you can ask your questions, and the speakers will have an opportunity to answer them. So would you join me in prayer, please? "Gracious Father, we praise your holy name and ask you to bless the people gathered here tonight in your house. We thank you for the wisdom you bestowed on our forefathers, who created the Bill of Rights guaranteeing us the freedom to speak, to worship you, and gather without fear of retribution. May we be forever mindful of the sacrifices of those who fought to preserve these precious freedoms. We ask you to guide us tonight, to grant us wisdom, understanding, and discernment as we address the future of our church. May our words and actions be pleasing unto you. May your will be revealed to us through our prayerful attention to your word as revealed in Scripture. Help us to live the call and continue to make disciples of Christ in our community and throughout the world. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen." All right, and we'll start with the presentations of the clergy, and I believe Meg is going to start first.
I'm sorry.
Well, we're together. We're together.
Good afternoon, everyone. I wanted to just begin this morning, this evening, just asking us to pause for just a minute, to recognize and acknowledge that this is a difficult space and to acknowledge our discomfort in it. So I wanted us to take just a couple of minutes, if we could. Molly's led us in a beautiful prayer, but I wanted to ask you if you would just maybe put your feet flat on the floor for just a moment. Sit in your chair upright as best as you can. Maybe let's close our eyes for just a moment. And I want to invite you to acknowledge your breath. You come from lots of different places, different responsibilities. Just take a moment to breathe. John Wesley, our founder, says, "In essentials unity; in non-essentials liberty; in all things charity." And our task together is to decide what is essential. Our creeds are not older than our Scripture text itself, but were written before the Scripture was canonized, and they were written to help us to know what is essential. The Church is the only organization that exists for its non-members. I want you to think about that for just a moment. We have hard questions, and we have a real desire for authentic conversation, and acknowledging how difficult it is to get to that place. It demands our vulnerability and a willingness to explore a different viewpoint, and this is the key and the hallmark of Wesleyan Methodist, the willingness to engage in Christian conference.
One of the most neglected gifts of the Holy Spirit may be the gift of discernment. In Philippians 1, Paul offers a prayer, and this is my prayer, "That your love might overflow more and more with knowledge and full depth of insight to help you determine what is best." Hear that prayer again. This is my prayer, "That your love may overflow more and more with knowledge and full insight to help you determine what is best." In discernment, we lean into the active presence of God for the ability to seek His wisdom. It's not persuasion, who has the best speech or the best idea. It's a teachable openness to God.
Discernment requires creating availability in our schedules. It requires space, and it requires time and silence. It requires a willingness to wait for clarity. It's not something that we can demand. And discernment requires empathy. We have to care about each other. And I believe that united Methodists everywhere, whether progressive or traditional or very much, followers of Christ who value Scripture, who seek to live out a life of love and grace paired with social justice, we have a deep desire to model our lives around the life, the death, and the resurrection of Christ.
My approach to the human sexuality questions that are before us, in some ways, is a simple one. As I've said before in this very space, I believe that the clear teaching of the whole Bible and the whole Church, in every time and age and culture and place, is faithful and is fair, is full of grace and full of truth when we say, "One, that marriage is God's gift to a man and a woman; and, two, that sexual intimacy belongs in the joy of marriage, that it finds its best and most fulfilling place there." I believe that lines us up with the beautiful and the gracious purposes of God, and that's not my personal approach as an individual, as an elder in this church. I encourage you to hear what our United Methodist Discipline says about marriage. We affirm the sanctity of the marriage covenant that's expressed in love, in mutual support, in personal commitment, and shared fidelity between a man and a woman. We believe that God's blessing rests upon such marriage, whether or not they're children of the union, and we support laws in civil society that define marriage as the union of one man and one woman. Friends, I'll tell you, Methodists don't have a corner on that idea. The United Methodist Church's teaching on marriage reflects the Bible and the majority of the Christian Church's positive message about marriage, sexual expression, and family life, beginning in the creation account in Genesis and continuing into the New Testament, where the marriage of a man and a woman is presented as an image of the union between Jesus and the Church. I start with that positive vision because the work of the Gospel is essentially a positive vision, and that functions in our 21st century context just as well as it did for the ancient peoples who first received and preserved for us what we now would call the Bible. The challenge for us in these meetings is to discern how we live, how we live together with the Bible's prohibitions around same-gender sexual behavior, and even more specifically, how we've agreed together as a United Methodist Church not to perform same-gender marriages or ordain for ministry persons openly in same-gender sexual relationships. I'll acknowledge first that the question of same-sex behavior is not a prominent biblical concern, at least if we count it by the number of specific passages or verses involved. It's not mentioned in the Ten Commandments. Jesus never mentions it either, but let's remember, Jesus didn't mention a lot of things, including slavery, arguably the most pervasive social dysfunction of His time. Now, had He mentioned slavery, He likely would have opposed it, and we're right to make that kind of hermeneutic, that kind of interpretive jump. And slavery may be a good place to pause for a moment because the Church, in our history, especially here in the U.S., and maybe even in portions that we read in the Bible, may seem to us to be a mixed bag when it comes to the way we've dealt with slavery. But here's the key interpretive idea I'd like you to see, the life, death, and resurrection of Jesus. The Gospel itself plants the seeds that later dissolve slavery as a social institution. The master-slave relationship becomes a brother-brother or sister-sister relationship. The Gospel abolishes all the assumptions and all the prejudices that make slavery possible. So the change was able to come when the Church responded to slavery with greater humility, with more humility for the truth of the biblical text and not less letting the biblical text reshape the Church instead of the opposite. Back to the issue at hand, where the Bible does mention same-sex behavior, it is consistent in describing that behavior as contrary to God's promises and God's purposes. The prohibitions there are not like ceremonial law, what ancient Israel did in temple worship, or like the civil laws that they used to govern their court systems. Those are part of the Old Testament, and these ceremonial laws, careful interpretation helps us know that some of those ceremonial and civil laws had application only for a limited time and place. But these other laws are rightly seen as moral laws, laws that point to continued ethical significance for the way we treat ourselves and the way we interact with one another. And rather than overturning those moral laws, the New Testament doubles down. The New Testament reaffirms these as helpful and hopeful patterns of life. Let me be clear on this, especially with the way we discuss sexuality today. The Bible never forbids an orientation. It never forbids what some perceive as an inner feeling, a mindset, a state, and the Bible never forbids a person, but it does speak with one voice contrary to same-sex behavior. Third, and finally, same-sex behavior is never singled out for particular attention. It's always mentioned as one more red light, one more warning sign, if you will, of human life gone astray and human life turning against God. In Leviticus 18, it's listed alongside warnings against sexual behavior within the same human family. In Romans 1, it's alongside adultery as an illustration of one of many ways that humans try to live on our own against divine reason and nature. And in 1 Corinthians 6, where we see the Greek version of those same Hebrew words we first met in Leviticus 18, it appears truthfully as a part of a message of deep grace and encouragement, reminding those first-generation Christians what behaviors they had once been living with, and where through Jesus they had begun to experience not just simple forgiveness, but hope, new life, redemption, and transformation. Friends, all of those concepts are at the very heart of the Gospel, and we're in a place where our United Methodist Church, the Church many of us have known for most, if not all, of our lives, is on the edge of making perhaps major changes in the way we interpret and apply these parts of the Bible. And for me, and maybe for others, that's a red light. That's a warning sign, and so I invite you with us to discern with great love for one another what such change might do to the very message of redemption and of hope that we live out, I think, effectively here at Isle of Hope Church.
Everyone who reads Scripture, interprets Scripture, we can't help it. We bring our own understanding and our experiences, how we grew up, what we've been taught. We bring all of that to our understanding. This book that we hold so sacred, that is so sacred, this living, breathing Word, was written to ancient Israel, and so no matter what you believe personally, we also have to consider the audience and the context and the purpose of the text to who it was originally written, even as we understand and claim Scripture as living and sacred to us today. The Bible was written for us, but it wasn't written to us. The goal here is not to change your mind. That is not my responsibility or my purpose, but my goal is for us to be kinder, more empathetic, and more generous in our differences. I agree with Scott, marriage between a man and a woman is the biblical story. The purpose of be fruitful and multiply was to build a nation, and how do you build a nation? You create people. John 14, this beloved Scripture that we say so often in funerals, "I go to prepare a place for you, and if it weren't so, would I have told you?" Well, it gives us great hope at the end of life, but Jesus's audience would have understood it as marriage language. You build a room on your father's house, and when it is complete, you collect your betrothed to consummate the marriage. Sex equals marriage in antiquity because children equal survival, and families build a nation. We see it in creation. We see it again with Noah. We see it with Abraham, and again at Mount Sinai. And just as Adam and Eve were created in the garden, which is foundational to our traditional understanding that they are one flesh. And so one of the early denominational struggles that we find ourselves in with these Scripture texts was divorce, is divorce. Divorce was allowed by Moses because of humanity's hearts being hardened. Jesus said, "That is never God's intent," and so Jesus in His teaching clarifies the law and the fullness of it. Jesus says, "You are not to be divorced for any reason at all, and the only way to be remarried is if your spouse commits adultery and leaves you. If your spouse wants to stay, you must forgive them and remain with them. If you leave your spouse and remarry, you commit adultery, and the one you marry commits adultery." There's no gray here. There's no statute of limitations. It seems clear this is the law. Now is the time for me to clarify that I don't offer this as a judgment on anyone who has suffered a divorce. You have heard me say, if we have had any conversation around divorce at all, that one of my most profound takeaways from my seminary days was a professor who, in our family class, who helped us to understand that marriage is a life commitment, but it is not a life sentence. And sometimes when we find ourselves in that difficult place, divorce is necessary. But we do interpret Scripture from our cultural context. And so as we interpret Scripture, how does one make the move to allow remarriage outside of adultery but not make the same interpretive move on human sexuality? The latter is far more vague in the Bible. Divorce and remarriage are very clear, and that is why our Book of Discipline of the United Methodist Church also prohibited remarriage of divorced people by clergy since its beginning and only changed that stance in the mid-20th century due to the increasing rate of divorce in our society. So how can I make a theological argument rooted in Wesleyan grace as to why I choose to remarry persons who have been divorced, even though Jesus has tough words on it? That leads me to ask myself, at what place, at what place does that graceful move have a cutoff point? Again, we aren't talking about anything goes. We are talking about celibacy and singleness, fidelity in marriage. If anyone is interpreting Scripture, we all have. The word homosexual never appears in either the Old or the New Testaments. Of course, it's an English word. Much of the teaching in the Old Testament around human sexuality is to enforce the purity laws, the ritual holiness code of ancient Israel, who was to be set apart people. It's interesting that much of Jesus's teaching reinterprets and redefines those laws. So we're forced to explore the concept in the biblical, original languages and the cultural context. We must do the hard work of diving into the Scriptures and the culture of Scripture to accurately reveal the intent. It is dangerous to pick and choose absolutes according to our comfort level. We don't live under the holiness code of ancient Israel. We no longer live under the law of divorce, and we don't condone slavery or believe that women are property. And so we do Scripture and our brothers and sisters a huge injustice to decide the definition of appropriate human sexuality at face value without consideration of culture, context, and language. There are generally considered to be seven biblical passages that are problematic to human sexuality, and I would argue along with other biblical scholarship, these passages are addressing rape, shame, abuse, power over. None of them speak to orientation or mutual relationship. In my experience, the opposite of love is not hate. It is control. So for unity, we must have an openness to Scripture, not just to find answers, but to be shaped and formed in a relationship to this book and a realization that we faithfully read and interpret it differently, and we have since its inception. We have to have an openness to each other. We are quick to write each other off when we don't see eye to eye. And we have to have an openness to heart because we all have something to learn. Discernment is not deciding. I do not accept the false dilemma that has been presented. If you are traditional in your views on human sexuality, you cannot remain in the United Methodist Church. I reject that. Traditional as well as progressive-minded Methodists are choosing to remain in the United Methodist Church. Our greatest gift to the world is to agree that the saving grace of Jesus Christ is what is essential and to continue to work for a Church where we can live peaceably with each other. That doesn't mean agreement. It means unity. Disagreement is expected. We have been disagreeing since the Church was birthed. Scripture is full of it. A divided world needs a united Church, and we hold true that the United Methodist Church is still a powerful means for Christ to redeem the world. Our denomination was formed in piety and prayer and Scripture and social justice as its foundation. All persons are of sacred worth.
Bill Daniel is one of our lay leaders here at Isle of Hope, a longtime lay member of Annual Conference representing our church, and Bill will come and speak to us.
Hello, everyone. This is where I prove that fools march in, but angels bear the cross.
I don't think he's on.
Ask me to speak a little bit about the United Methodist Church and what it is now and what it's been. When our forefathers gathered on these grounds to start Isle of Hope Methodist Church, it would have been a part of the Methodist Episcopal Church. The Methodist Episcopal Church had begun to generate with the rise of Christianity, evangelical Christianity, first in the colonies and now in the new states, and it's moving into the South. Wesley Monuments, which had been started by Trinity, now started a congregation here in this little island. A big change would come not too soon after it started, great deal of dissension, great deal of angst, and yes, indeed, reading the Scriptures differently in different parts of the country. Imagine that. And so in the 1840s, bishop in Georgia, he was in August at the time, had lost his wife, and he remarried. His wife died, and with her came a slave that she had inherited. And later on, the bishop would also inherit another slave, but he kept the slave, Kitty was her name, he kept the slave. He moved eventually to Oxford College, Emory University, Emory College at that time. And the Methodist Episcopal Church got very upset about this because the Methodist Episcopal Church nationwide was against slavery, and the abolition movement of that time period was growing and growing and growing. But here where we live, we read it differently. And so actually, I think they met for two to three weeks in Richmond, the annual conference or general conference of that year of the Methodist Episcopal Church debating the issue, and as a result, they split. And our congregation here would have become part of the Methodist Episcopal South, and it would remain that until 1938, when the Methodist Episcopal South and Methodist Episcopal Church merged once again. And then in 1968, Methodist Episcopal, now nationwide, would merge with the, and I'm forgetting the name, the United Brethren, also Wesleyan denomination, and form the United Methodist Church, and that's where we have been. Today, the United Methodist Church has here in the United States about 6.2 million members, 31,268 churches, and in 2015, the Pew Research Foundation determined that 3.6% of the U.S. population, or nine million adults, identified as Methodist. Now, think about that. Nine million said they were Methodist, but only 6.2 were really members. Doesn't that sound familiar to us today? We have churches now throughout the world. We exist in 136 countries. We've sent 662 missionaries to other parts of the world by the last count. We have full-time, working full-time, 500-plus, 550 relief workers and refugee workers that we send all across the world in times of need. There are 52 hospitals in this nation associated with the Methodist denomination, including, of course, our own Candler Hospital. We have 92 colleges that connect with Methodism, 13 seminaries throughout the world, and we have grown so that now there are really more members, I believe, more citizens that are Methodist in Africa than even in our country. We had some slides. Thank you. I'd like to talk just a moment about the geographical jurisdiction. Can we put that up? We are part of the South Georgia Annual Conference. Methodists are divided into annual conferences. That's a geographical group, and as you can see, we, South Georgia Annual Conference is South Georgia, and we are in the coastal district on the side. It's one of the larger and more conservative annual conferences in the United States. And then as a part of the South Georgia Annual Conference is a member of the Southeast Jurisdiction. So we can go to the next slide. Here we are in the United States, and you can see the Southeast Jurisdiction is made up of southern states, the Southeast, the South Central Jurisdiction, the West, Texas, the Southwest, and then the Western Jurisdiction, literally almost the western half of the United States, the North Central Jurisdiction, up in the Great Lakes area, Chicago, Ohio, and then the Northeastern Jurisdiction, West Virginia, on into Pennsylvania, New York, and up to the Northeast. Population-wise, might find it interesting, there are actually a few more Methodist in the North Georgia Conference than all of the Western Jurisdiction. So we are largely in the United States, a Southern centralized and southwestern, South Central Jurisdiction is where a great bunch of our population is. Our older churches, Philadelphia, be example, are up in the Northeastern Jurisdiction. Our older churches, Philadelphia being example, are up in the Northeastern Jurisdiction. In sitting down to try to decide how, one of the tasks I was given is, why am I a United Methodist? Why did I end up here? Like some of you, I married here. Met a good Methodist in college, and the rest is history. My wife, Linda, we've been joking, has been here 50, almost 60 years. Came as a teenager and found a home among the young youth group here in 1968. And I maintain that it was this church and its impact in her life that set up that meeting at Emory where we were introduced. But why a United Methodist? Well, I joined this church. I didn't even think too much about it at the time. I loved the people, I loved the minister. It was this church. In the years that followed, things happened that began to open up for me what it meant to be part of the South Georgia Annual Conference and even the United Methodist Church. As a few of you may know, I was a very young, naive, green, young lawyer going into business with my father-in-law when I was asked to chair the trustees committee of this church. Jim Rush asked me, he said, "Don't worry, all you have to do is make sure the insurance policy is up to date." In January, I took office. And I believe it was in February that the church burned to the ground. Suddenly, I had to call a meeting of the trustees. Many of you remember that. And as a part of that experience, the aid and the help, the care and the love of, first, the annual conference, reaching out to us of churches throughout South Georgia, really came home because we didn't know how we were going to rebuild. The insurance policy, finally, I opened it up and looked at it like Jim had said, and it was, it had a problem or two. Long story, we got through it. But it was the help of the other churches in this jurisdiction that helped us as we began rebuilding and coming together. And that brings me to a description of what United Methodism is that's so very important. We are a connectional church. In this process, I've learned there are two types of churches today. There are congregational churches, they're independent, or maybe just a few together. We have them here in Savannah, independent. And then there are evangelical Episcopal churches with a little E, which I like to use the word "connectional." That comes into play in just a few minutes as we talk about assets and who owns what. The other part that I have really come to appreciate, excuse me. Pollen in January is just not right. The other part that I've really come to appreciate. We Methodist balance Christ's message of evangelism and Christ's message of caring for others in such a unique way. Now, when I met that girl at Emory, I came from a Baptist tradition. Are there any other Baptist, former Baptists in the room? Won't you agree, we Baptists make the best Methodist? The rules are so much easier over here. I've seen dancing going on. Anyway, the thing I really was moved to about United Methodism and Methodism in general is this balance of the evangelical gospel and the social gospel of caring for others. And we in our church, we demonstrate that in so many ways, and I am so grateful. Structurally, there are issues that the United Methodist Church provides us, and other Methodist denominations will do the same, I suppose. For me, as my 40-plus years here, I think what I've come to value most is the appointment process, the itineracy ministry. As Methodist, our ministers are not necessarily members of our church, they're members of the conference. And as you all know, or may know, periodically, we change ministers. New ministers are assigned to us. Those in the associate positions are often hired directly, as we would anyone else. I was chairman of the SPR Committee when we met this young lady who's very special and brought her in to be our associate pastor years ago. So that relationship is very important because when we work with the bishop and the cabinet of district superintendents to talk about transitions, we have a chance to describe the type of leadership we will need and the type of leadership that we feel is a good fit for us. And in that process, over the years, we have been blessed, at least as long as I've been here, with just some of the finest men and women assigned to our church that we could ever have imagined. The appointment process means, and the itineracy within the denomination means there is a well-structured training program, educational program, qualifying program that looks at ministers and ministerial candidates and gives them the training and opportunities before, and to prepare them for a church like ours, complex church like ours. The denomination allows us to have, through the South Georgia Conference, a host of mission activities and outreach into areas that individual churches probably couldn't afford. They run from the children's home in Macon, the Vaschiti, I'm trying to remember Jim Rush's favorite, works with disabled adults. Ma'am? Vashtai, thank you. That's kind of close. That, I think, is such a special ministry that we do. Those types of mission activities that are regional, we are able to participate through this process. Well, the, let me go a little bit further. The structure of our denomination, as I said a moment ago, is Episcopal or connectional. And that means that as part of a larger church, we are governed by a book of discipline. And that book of discipline has been, is created, enacted, changed, amended at the general conference level, which is the international meeting occurs every four years. And their actions in 2019 that set up an exit process is why we're in this discernment period now. Also in that book of discipline was the enactment of a policy that John Wesley created as he began the Methodism and began establishing churches. In reading about it historically, Wesley was concerned about his ministers kind of going off the reservation and maybe selling out to the Calvinists. So he put in his original structure that the property and assets of a Methodist church would come under a trust clause. And what is that? In a deed that simply says that this facility, this property that we have, is held by the Isle of Hope United Methodist Church, I'm sorry, yes, is in trust for the South Georgia Annual Conference. So it's just trust clause that means the property is ultimately the property of the South Georgia Conference. And that's true throughout the denomination. And it has never held us back from doing anything we wanted to. But within the discipline, there are steps you would take to make sure that if you buy or sell or mortgage your property, you follow specific rules. And I think, we talked about the trust clause as being a burden, but putting on my hat as a litigator many years ago, it also gives us a great deal of protection. And it's something we need to be thinking about regardless of what future steps we take. All right, there will be two schools of thought in this upcoming discernment process, and that is, how will we respond to the proposition of shall we disaffiliate or leave the United Methodist Church? And while, since I am talking about the denomination, I wanted to just touch on a few points that would be, I think, valid if we remain. First, it is my hope and prayer that those, that if we remain, and those churches that do remain, continue to have both conservatives and moderates and progressives as a part of their denomination. Fifty years of dealing with political things has taught me that it's that moderate middle ground where you can get the most things done. And you need that balance in any organization. They will continue, and it's important you hear this, they will continue to hold on to the core beliefs of Wesleyan Christian doctrine. One of the things that has frustrated our bishop is that the times we live in, social media, often governed by algorithms that sends things to you the moment you research a topic, and you look at that and you say, "Well, I understand that." Well, it will send more to you. It's not a balancing process. So it is important you hear that the United Methodist Church will continue to hold its core beliefs of Wesleyan Christian doctrine. Those cannot be changed except at the general conference level, and some of the originating Wesleyan fundamental beliefs cannot be changed. Finally, we will continue to be, or they will continue to be, a connectional discipline, a connectional denomination. So churches will probably, I suspect, have to work together even tighter in the years to come. And I think the process that we're going through, and the churches, particularly in the South, the Southeastern jurisdiction are going through, in considering disaffiliation, it's my hope and prayer that that will lead the General Conference to make some serious changes in its structure and its governance, I hope. And then finally, politics. The General Conference meets, was supposed to meet every four years, called meeting several times for two-year intervals. Because of COVID, it was canceled and postponed. It will meet again in 2024. And the challenge that we've been facing and that we are wrestling with is the process of leaving and the timing that that's involved. The, in the South Georgia Conference, we have the disaffiliation process, which they have, which was created by the General Conference, the international level, and we are now in that process now. And the South Georgia Conference has created an additional step that would extend the time period to leave until December 31, 2024. However, there is a difference of opinion, legal opinion, about how strong that extension will work. And I see Tom is here, and Tom has done a great deal, Tom Nash has done a great deal of research on this and has been concerned that if someone was to challenge at the Methodist Supreme Court, jurisdictional Methodist Court, they might be able to overturn that extension. But the council for the South Georgia Conference, council for the trustees of the South Georgia Conference have both, and now the bishop, have emphatically stood behind that extension. So that's the United Methodist Church. One of the largest democratic, with a little D, denominations in the world, meaning that it is governed through a voting process. It is so big and so varied. And it means that we encompass lots of different people. I'll close with this story. When the kids were middle school age, we were on our family vacation trip to Arizona. I think we were down in the Tucson area. It was Sunday, and so I determined we were going to get up and get the kids to church so they would see a Methodist church in a whole new, whole new environment and could understand what's similar as well as what's different. They were mortified, but they were all dragged in, and we sat in the back. And at the end of the service, it was their process to, visitors, raise your hand, and then they gave you the microphone. My son, Thomas, crawled under the chair as I explained. We were all the way, and I turned it up a bit just to get the kids up to, all the way from Savannah, Georgia. What we learned there was despite the geographical differences, the Word of God, the message of Christ was heard in the same way, and the red hymn books were opened up. And folks were dressed differently, and they talked differently, and their announcements were awfully strange. But we were all part of United Methodist nationwide. This is a very difficult decision, and my goal was to kind of share with you the status of the United Methodist Church as we move into this period of discernment.
Is this one on? I hope this is not a sign of things to come, but if y'all don't mind, I'm going to take this thing out of my ear because it's bothering me. I mean, I'm already stressed enough. I'm up here with, you know, two ordained ministers and two lawyers. I noticed they bought little folders up here. I have a book. So anyway, I am the current chair of the Board of Trustees for our church, our United Methodist Church. And, you know, in this sermon process, you know, I'm going to come at you from a little bit of a different angle because I'm not ordained, I'm not a lawyer, actually, I'm in the real estate business, I don't know why they even let me get up here. But, and I may say things that may be a little redundant, and if I do, I apologize for that. And I might have, and I will have a different viewpoint about some things than what had been said. But I do want to make something very, very clear before I start. You know, the folks in this church are very, very, very important. Bill is a personal friend of mine and has been for a long time, and no matter what, will still be a friend of mine, no matter what we do. And the same is true for many folks in this church. I have seen, and, you know, read and studied, and a lot of the folks in other churches have gone through this process, and, you know, they've kind of become combative with each other, and that's a terrible thing, and I do not want anything like that to happen for us. So, you know, I was listening to a few things, you know. You know, Bill was talking about he was a trustee chair and had to build the church back, and I'm glad he did because I was actually baptized in that sanctuary in 1985 as an adult. And while a lot of people came to the Methodist Church as children or married into it, you know, I kind of wandered around a long time before I figured out, you know, what I needed to be doing with myself. And I was led to this church by a friend, actually, who actually led my wife Gina to the church, who you all may know, back then she was Judy Way, she's now Judy Monroe. And invited us to come to Sunday School, and from Sunday School, we kind of stayed and, you know, we've been here ever since. Of course, I will not forget that she said something the first day when we were coming to Sunday School, we had to give the opening prayer. to Sunday School, that we had to give the opening prayer, even though we'd never been there before. So, I, I think that you've heard, you've heard Scott talk, and and we've talked about, you know, what the scripture says, and I heard what Meg said about interpreting the scriptures. And I, you know, for me, from a more simple viewpoint, I tend to take the scripture, and I tend to, to, I do interpret it, but I tend to interpret it as what it says. And and I don't try to take what it says and try to determine if it means something else. And I think as we go through, you know, our life and we talk to people about Jesus Christ, I mean, I think we have to have a firm stand on what it is that we say. Does the scripture say this or does it not say this? Which part of it, which part of it doesn't count? Which part of it doesn't apply or can mean something else? I think that makes it very difficult when you're trying to talk to somebody about finding Christ. I think we have to have a main stay. I think we have to say we believe what we believe. You know, the church in, in, this is all about the process of discernment, about whether to disaffiliate or not. And so I want to go back a little bit, back to 2019, when there was a commission on the way forward that was to, you know, examine plans for the United Methodist Church to consider. And and they did, they developed four plans. And, you know, basically, those plans were the One Church, the the Connection Plan, the Traditional Plan, and the Simple Plan. And in a special session of the 2019 General Conference, the Traditional Plan was voted on as the plan to accept. Now, since that time, the book of discipline has not fundamentally changed with its respect to same-sex marriage or the ordination of LGBTQ individuals. It remains fundamentally the same now as it did then. There was a bishop, John Yambasu, I hope I got his name right. But he determined that we had to have, because because every four years since 1972, this issue has come up in front of the general conference, every general conference. And so he said, okay, you know, I'm gonna call 16 guys up, or 15, actually, he's number 16. And I'm gonna get, you know, some traditionalists, some progressives, some centrists, and we're gonna meet, and we're gonna get together, and we're gonna try to see if we can't figure out a way to solve these problems that divide us. Well, what they discovered, and they they hired a mediator, interestingly enough, a Jewish lawyer named Kenneth Feinberg, who was a national leading mediator to help lead them through the process. And in addition to the, to the 15 additional members, there were actually 10 other individuals, ministers and stuff that served as well, although they did not sign the document that came out of all of that meeting. So what they discovered was, is that there were, in fact, disagreements that divide us. And that they really, the only way going forward was, it was called the Protocol, which is reconciliation through grace and separation. And it was a document, it was signed by all 16 members. And it was gonna go to the general conference in 2020. However, COVID-19 showed up, and there was no general conference in 2020, and has not been one since. The next one is in 2024. And since that time, this this protocol, which was basically an avenue for the church to separate into two different churches, if you will, you know, one being traditional, traditional, and one being, you know, more progressive, has, you know, kind of fallen by the wayside and has lost support over the years, even from some of the original signers of the document. And and unfortunately, Bishop Yambusu has passed away, died in a car accident. So that seems to have lost a lot of steam. I just point that out because what it demonstrated was, is that there are still divisive issues within the church. And that committee felt like the only way to solve those issues was to divide into two different churches. You know, it's way above my head, as I said. Any rate, the, then came along the paragraph that we keep talking about, which is in the book of discipline, which is paragraph 2553. And which is in the book of discipline, was put in in 2019. And basically, it, it was put in, and it's titled, Disaffiliation of Local Churches Over Issues Related to Human Sexuality. And it was a pathway for churches that couldn't agree to disaffiliate from the United Methodist Church. Now, that paragraph, which is in the book of discipline, expires December 31 of this year, 2023. And while, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about, you know, do we need to wait, you know, let's make a decision later, let's wait until 2024. The, I think the trustee, the South Georgia Conference trustees and the bishop have worked hard to try to develop an extension for that. But the truth of the matter is, and like I said, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not a minister, but it is my understanding that the only person, the only way that the book of discipline can be changed is at the general conference. And that's not happening before this expires. So any other pathway to disaffiliation will have to come through some other vehicle. And as of this day, I've not heard of any. All I've heard is that there, there's, there could be an extension. So there's no guarantee of that, is what I'm saying. And I, and I think that, you know, that speaks to the timing of of things. And, you know, maybe in 2024, the general conference will say, hey, look, we're gonna still, we're gonna do this again because there's still churches that need, that want to disaffiliate, and that we can't, we can't reconcile. But but we have no assurance that that's the case. And part of that, you know, part of that paragraph, the disaffiliation, was, was that, you know, there would be sums of money that would be paid to the conference, and then the churches would, you know, the trust clause would be removed, the churches would own their own property. And in those sums of money would be unf, you know, unpaid apportionments in a year's, next year's apportionments, and the unfunded liability for the pastor's retirement fund for pastors that have worked for this church. And I'm gonna tell you, as we speak, the first number for the apportionments is $176,783. The unfunded retirement liability is $241,563. Or altogether, it's $418,346. You know, that money's paid, the trust clause comes out, there'll be other expenses if a church disaffiliates, because there'll be legal expenses that deal with titles and deeds and governance documents and bylaws and things that have to, have to happen if the church, you know, doesn't join immediately another Methodist Conference or another Wesleyan Conference, but remains independent. There'll be some expenses. And I, and I, and I've heard, so, I have heard and I have been asked, isn't this just a deal so that the churches can, you know, like, like, get their property? Isn't it like a business deal? Well, you know, the trustees discussed this a little bit at the beginning of the season. If this church disaffiliates and the trust clause is removed, it is our intention to hire a lawyer, not just a freebie lawyer, but a lawyer, and to put this property into some trust for future generations, and also to try to provide some protection from creditors or, or, you know, for some crazy person like me trying to sell it. I mean, so, so it's not really, it's not like a, it's not like a money grab, you know? We're not gonna try to say, okay, now it's ours, we're gonna sell it. You know, the property is, is for, is for ministry. It's, it is made, it is here, money has been invested in this by, by everybody in this room, and it's, it's to have church in, it's to do ministry in. It's not to, you know, to own, to sell. I just want to make that clear because, you know, I've had that question asked of me. And and that Bill and I have talked about a trust and if this should happen and some way to to hold this. So I think that, that the conversation also about the property and, you know, as people come talk about it, and I know even, you know, the bishop had made some statements about it not being a business transaction, those, those comments are truly a distraction from the fairly narrow issue that we were, we were talking about. We are talking about whether or not a church wants to disaffiliate from the United Methodist Church based on its practice in accordance to the book of discipline, and whether or not the church wants to be more progressive going forward. That really is the issue. We have a current book of discipline, and it prohibits some of the things that have actually already happened. You've got, you know, openly gay, LGBTQ ministers and, you know, bishops have been elected in the Western District. You know, we don't control the Western District, but they are all part of the United Methodist Church, and that activity has happened. And there's been little or no consequence for the folks that have done that. So, you know, we are leaning, in my opinion, in a more progressive state as we move forward. And, you know, I, like I said, I, you know, I'm the simplest person up here. And, but I just think that each of you, I think if each of you should prayerfully consider what your, really your core beliefs are, because I think that's really what the issue is. And I think that you have to consider that, you have to make a decision on your own. You can get informed, you can talk to people, but you need to make it yourself. You don't need to let the person sitting next to you make it. This is a truly, truly important decision. I'm gonna steal something from my friend Bill and tell you that it's probably the most important decision since the Civil War. I mean, for this church. And, but I, I just suggest that you, you think, you study, you pray, and determine if, you know, you're, what you're doing is in God's will for you and for this church. You know, as I said, I'm pretty simple. That's really all I've got.
We're a little bit off script. And I'm a preacher, and I've always got more to say, but I don't know, do we, do we need to press through some of this, or do we need to allow time for more questions? That's, that's where I'm.
Well, we've got about 30 more minutes of scheduled time, and we want to entertain questions. We do have slides that are really important about pros and cons of United Methodist Church, of Global Methodist Church, and independent, and I think those are important to share.
Yeah, those are, those are important to share. So can we, can we get those? Can we get those up? Where are we? We're on page 20.
23. I'll take the United Methodist Church. How about that? Just some, some pros and cons there to, as we think about who we are as United Methodist, some of the big pros, that it has worked well for us, our system and our polity for the first century of our existence. We are of global impact. The United Methodist Committee on Relief, the General Board of Global Ministry, VASH Thai, the Children's Home, we are a connectional and a world church. We will continue to have conservatives, moderates, and progressives. We will continue to hold to our core Wesleyan doctrine. We are contextual in our freedom, and we also have a shared missional impact. Some of the cons are uncertainty about the future, need for reform in our structural governance. We'll continue to have conservatives, moderates, and progressives. Some will lead the IOH Church, the United Methodist Church, over the actions of our connection.
One of the first steps might be, after disaffiliation, that we would be independent either for a transitional time or maybe longer. I think you've got slides about independence. Yeah, the, the pros are no apportionments to a denominational structure, no connectional conflict above us because we would be our own entity, no trust clause, so we'd be able to decide what to do with our own property, and no itineracy, complete control over pastoral and other ministry-related hires. The challenges of being an independent church would be that we would have no accountability beyond our own willingness to hold one another accountable. Leadership transitions could be more challenging without a regular network, a flow of ministers from which to draw. We'd have the potential for diminished global impact because we'd be on our own to create our own global ministry outreach. And we'd have to recreate bylaws and governance documents. And then the conflict that we might, that we might think now is only external might be internalized here. And it might be then just a steep learning curve for us as a, as a church that's accustomed to being connectional, to learn what it means to be congregational as well.
There are lots of Wesleyan denominations to choose from. The United Methodist Church is certainly the largest of those Wesleyan denominations. But there's been much talk about the Global Methodist Church that is a newly formed denomination. And so thinking about the Global Methodist Church, some of those pros are a high level of accountability for churches and clergy, much less bureaucracy and promises, lower apportionments, there's no trust clause, consistent unilateral approach to human sexuality, and a chance to be on the ground floor of something new, and that's exciting to some people. Some of the cons in that are, there's uncertainty about the future, they still have not fully defined themselves, there's questions about viability. Bishops are given more power over clergy and churches, and a consistent unilateral approach to human sexuality. And again, some people will leave.
Yeah, we just, we just want to say at the end that, that.
We're exhausted.
We're exhausted. Can I still read the pages, the words on the, the words on the page? We know there are places of disagreement, but we want to disagree as, as well as we can and teach one another best how followers of Jesus act in our times, in our times, even of painful disagreement. And that says, that may say more about us than, than our, our position papers or our ideas do.
And I would just say, you know, the, the consistent conversation that I have had over these last months, as I have been in conversation individually with many of you, you have said, this is my church. This is my church. My friends, I want to say to you, this is not your church, this is God's church. This is God's church. And may that be our faithful discernment. Go from this place in the name of the One who loves us, the One who leads us, the One who holds us. Go in the name of peace. Amen.
Thank you all so much for coming up on a Sunday, rainy Sunday night.